At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. We have with us tonight Pastor Zach Kelly from Breeze Wood Church to lead us in our invocation and be followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
We just thank you tonight for the town of Hope Mills. We thank you, God, for our commissioners and those who are leading the city. We pray that you would give us wisdom. We pray, Holy Spirit, that you would allow us to follow your ways. God, we pray for wisdom to make the decisions that need to be made, to make this a safe city, a great city, God, for people to raise their families, to raise the next generation. God, we thank you that you are leading this town. We thank you that this town is named after Hope, and that means something. And tonight, we just place this in your hands, this meeting and everything that's going to be discussed here, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add a close session pursuant to NCGS 143-31811A6 to discuss personnel matters. And NCGS 143-31811A3 to consult with attorney on matters concerning their attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. Are there any other additions or deletions? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. At this time, we have official comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Marley.
I don't have anything right now, ma'am.
Mr. Scrola.
It is good to see everyone here. That is all I have.
Mayor Protem.
Same. Good to see everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening. Thank everyone for coming out. Looking forward to a very productive meeting.
Appreciate everyone being here this evening. I'd also like to recognize two of the ladies that helped organize, meet the candidates that we had on Saturday night. You can just shake your head, it's okay. Anyway, it was very well attended, but it was also a very good forum. And we also have a forum tomorrow night over in the Parks and Rec building, and that's sponsored by the Zetas, and it starts at 6:00 p.m. Deltas. I've been dealing with Zetas at my other meeting, but the Deltas. The Deltas are sponsoring it. It'll be in our Parks and Rec. And Commissioner Legg is on his way through the door. We'll wait for him, see if he has any official comments.
Hey, Jerry, how you doing?
Mr. Legg, do you have any official comments for this evening? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, next, we have the swearing-in of our new town clerk. For those of you that were unaware, our current town clerk, Jane Starling, is retiring. This is one of those times where it's a bittersweet. We welcome our new clerk, but we're also going to be sad to see Jane leave us. And I think your last day is November 9th. All righty then. So at this time, I'll ask our new town clerk, Ashley Wyatt. And do you have any family members with you?
No, ma'am.
And you just have to repeat after me, okay? I'll stand over here, that way they can get you. All right, and I, Ashley Wyatt, I solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, that I will face the charge of abuse in my office, and that I will report to the county court, and that I will appeal to the county attorney. This is Ashley.
At this time, I have a special proclamation. Whereas individuals, groups, and long-term care facilities across the country are celebrating October as Residents' Rights Month with the theme of Amplify Our Voices, to emphasize a community of long-term care residents coming together to make their voices heard. Whereas the observance points to the importance of quality in all aspects of residents' experiences, quality of care, quality of life, quality of service provision, and the right to make quality choices. Whereas the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 guarantees residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity, autonomy, and individuality. Whereas the North Carolina General Assembly enacted legislation to protect the rights of residents in nursing homes through the Patients' Bill of Rights and those in adult care homes through the Residents' Bill of Rights. Whereas the Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program was created under the Federal Older Americans Act and by the General Assembly to ensure residents and facilities are afforded the same considerations and opportunities to exercise their basic freedoms that individuals in the community take for granted. Whereas a concerned individual can be effective advocate for a single resident, the work of over 500 volunteer community advisory committee members appointed by the local boards of county commissioners are making a significant difference in the lives of residents in care facilities statewide. Whereas there are approximately 50,000 individuals living in nursing homes and 41,000 individuals living in adult care facilities in North Carolina, all of whom should be informed of their rights so they may be empowered to live with dignity and self-determination. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, by the virtue of the authority invested in me as mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as Long-Term Residents' Rights Month in the Town of Hope Mills. Thank you. All right, the next thing we have on our agenda is public hearings. And that public hearing is case ZNG-010-22. It's the initial zoning of 82.5 acres to R5 Single Family C2P Planned Service and Retail Conditional Zoning or to a more restrictive zoning district located 655 feet east of the intersection of Rockfish Road and Waldo's Beach Road and 560 feet west of the intersection of Camden Road and Whipper Will Drive. And this is submitted by Trey Levick and the agent on behalf of Barbara M. Johnson Ayers. I'll turn it over to Emily at this time.
This is a request to initially zone the property to R5 Single Family and C2P Planned Service and Retail Conditional Zoning. So the Town of Hope Mills received a contiguous annexation petition for 82.5 acres, which is tied to four different parcels of land. The subject property is located 655 feet east of the intersection of Rockfish Road and Waldo's Beach Road, along with being 560 feet west of the intersection of Camden Road and Whipper Will Drive. Access to the property has at least three possibilities, including but not limited to Waldo's Beach Road, Rockfish Road, and Camden Road. The Board of Commissioners accepted the petition under resolution R 2022-02 and annexation number A 2022-01, and set public hearing for March 21st of 2022. Annexation petition was approved at the March 21st, 2022 board meeting with the authorization to begin the initial zoning process. The Cumberland County Joint Planning Board recommended approval at the June 21st, 2022 meeting. The Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan calls for medium-density residential and office institution and parks in this location. This request is not compliant with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan. The applicant has met with staff, who has agreed to the following conditions. That includes no convenience stores or fuel sales on adjacent out parcels, a six-foot privacy fencing with increased plant materials by 50% over code requirement, and heavier vegetation along property adjacent to the single-family units. These conditions were brought up due to conversations with Harmony Hope Mills. As the applicant has agreed to these conditions, that makes Harmony Hope Mills in favor of this. This here is showing the location of the property. As you can see here, it shows the utilities are right there at the property for water and sewer, sewer being the green lines and water being the blue lines that are north. This is showing our Cumberland Southwest Plan. And this gives you an idea of the breakdown for 27.4 acres being R5, 55.1 acres being C2P. This gives you an idea of what they're wanting to put there. As you can see, you've got commercial on the right and there is residential on the left. This is how the property looks at the moment. And that's everything. If there are no further questions of me, I ask that the floor be opened up for public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Have a motion to open public hearing. At this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak opposed to this project?
Motion to close public hearing.
Have a motion to close public hearing. Public hearing is closed. At this time, does the board have any questions for... Okay?
Okay, so I see that it's not in compliance with the Cumberland, Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan. Now, I know they have the little picture there. Are we allowed to talk about what potentially is going into those areas?
What... I'll chime in. What's before you this evening is simply the consideration of the initial zoning, which is the assignment of the R5 and C2P to the subject property tied to the property being annexed. That's what's under consideration, because after the property was annexed a year ago, general statute requires the initial zoning after 60 days or it becomes unzoned. So it is unzoned, but tonight is just for the consideration of the subject property's designation under the suitable zoning district.
And just to add on to that, what you can consider in an initial zoning is all of the potential uses that can be made for that particular zoning designation, which means not specific... I've heard it, it might be this, but here's what it could be under this zoning.
Okay, in that case, what could it be? Give me a broad range of what it could be, from retail to movie theater kind of thing. What can it be?
Well, based on the plan that they gave us, which... Let me scroll back. So obviously, the left side is showing multifamily, and the right side, it looks to be two rather large commercial-use buildings that could be retail. And as already stated earlier, they did, in essence, promise to Harmony Hope Mills that they would not be doing convenience stores or fuel gas stations.
Let me ask you this. Would... Because if it does say multifamily units, is that considered commercial? Or is it a rental?
Multifamily would be considered apartments.
So is that fall under commercial zoning?
No, that's the R5 section.
So they're split... They want it split, is what you're saying then? They want split, commercial and residential?
So the yellow side, they're wanting to do as R5 residential, and then, I guess that's orange. The orange side, they would like to do as commercial.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions on the board?
Madam Mayor, I have a comment if I may. This land is right by my house, right behind it. I'm in favor of a proposal to build this in, this split commercial residential area. Because if that don't go there, I don't know what will.
That's true.
And we don't really control what goes there. We can have a say on it, but that's about it. But I think that if they've done a lot of planning on this, then we need to move forward with it. That's all. Thank you.
I would like to say this. I like the fact that they did go a step further to make sure that the privacy fences are in place, and even went additional 50% over the code. And heavy vegetation, and this is something that we have to address most times when someone wants to come in and bring structures like this of this nature. So I commend them on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
Only during the public hearing.
During public hearing.
Okay.
Because it... Now, obviously, you talk with Harmony of Hope Mills. What about those, it looks like apartments, because I'm looking at the map? It's further to your right.
Let me see.
It's either houses or apartments. It looks like a neighborhood. Yeah.
So they were sent notifications.
And no one responded?
No one has contacted me from the single-family homes over there. The only contacts that I've received is Harmony Hope Mills and one of the other companies that is adjacent to the property.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, action.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the initial zoning request to the R5 Single Family C2P Planned Service and Retail Conditional Zoning District with proposed conditions that is tied to case ZNG-010-22, as recommended by the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board and the Town of Hope Mills Planning Staff. And find that even though the request is not consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013 designation, the economic and regional impact of the proposed development fits within the vision and long-term outlook of the area developed to the immediate north. Approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the district requested is in harmony with surrounding existing and future uses and zoning.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public comments. And I remind you that you have three minutes, and you have to come to the microphone and give your name and address. And at this time, we have Cindy Hamilton.
Evening, everybody. My name is Cindy Hamilton. I live at 4020 Princess Amelia Lane in Hope Mills. I'm here tonight... Excuse me. Good evening, mayor, board, and staff. I'd just like to clear some things up about the meet and greet that we had Saturday evening, and explain a little bit how it all came about and what we did. I saw a post asking for volunteers to help set up the meet and greets. I volunteered to help, since I thought it was a good cause for the community and would let the citizens know exactly where the incumbents and the candidates stood as far as the voting. So we organized it, we prepared the questions, we paid for this event out of our own pockets, distributed the flyers where we could, and no one on the BOC, on the Board of Commissioners, or the mayor was involved in any way with this event. We met several times trying to get disorganized so it would be beneficial to the town and would help the citizens vote for our candidates. I had asked about posting the flyer on one of our groups and was immediately asked who was doing the meet and greet or who the moderator would be. And I've left you all the actual flyer. I almost immediately was asked on the chatter a few minutes later, with the exception of who was sponsoring the event, who us was, and who was paying for it and who the moderator was. It was even said, what's the secret? There wasn't any secret. It was... Everything was... There was no bias involved in this. At that time, we didn't have a moderator for the meet and greet, and I really couldn't answer the questions until I was able to speak with the group, the whole committee. So we agreed to answer the questions that was on the flyer. It wasn't... I have to admit it, it wasn't very explanatory, but we did the best that we could with the flyer. So after it was explained how we did that, that still wasn't enough for the group. They kept coming at us. Even one person doesn't even live in Hope Mills, kept it going. And it was, like I said, it was done out of the goodness of our hearts. We didn't... The mayor wasn't involved, none of the Board of Commissioners was involved, none of the staff was involved. It was just four ladies in the community that came together to try to do something good for the community. That's all that it was. So even one of our commissioners commented with a meme regarding us and said that it was shady. There was nothing shady about this at all. And it was also said that, when I posted on another group, which I shouldn't have because they don't do politics and I didn't realize it, was who's the moderator? Well, that had already... We didn't have a moderator. It took us a long time to get a moderator. We finally got a moderator. He came down with COVID, so he wasn't able to attend the event. So Ms. Warner did the... We got Joe Shepherd in to do the moderating. So then, I just didn't think it was all necessary, what was posted out there when we were doing it out of the goodness of our hearts, trying to help the community, trying to let everyone in the community know where the candidates stood, where the incumbents stood as far as the election. It was also said to me, everyone has stepped up to do something better for this community. Now you have gotten involved. May I continue? And it somehow negates the decades that some of us have done. So I'm not sure how I negated anything. I do know that I was tried, found guilty, and sentenced to being unfriended by various citizens for going over to the dark side, whatever that means. So I kind of... And I don't understand that, since I don't socialize with the mayor, I don't socialize with the board, I don't socialize with the staff, so I don't know how I ended up being on the dark side. And I kind of feel that this kind of publicity kept a lot of citizens from attending Saturday evening, because this message went out to 1,400-plus citizens in the town on the chatter. Whether or not they read it isn't the issue. I don't believe it should have happened to begin with. But I was pleased with the turnout with the incumbents and the candidates, because when we're at the BOC, we don't get a chance to hear what the incumbents, what they stand for, because they're busy doing town business and voting and doing things for the town. That's why we have the meet and greets, so the people can hear what they stand for, what their issues are, what they want to do for the town. So that was one of the reasons that we had it. So I don't regret being a part of the committee. I learned quite a bit from the candidates Saturday evening, so I've kind of changed the way I'm going to vote this year. But I do vote for honest people, integrity, character, and transparency. So I plead not guilty to these charges, whether you believe it or not. I'm not guilty of being biased, I'm not guilty of going to the dark side, none of that stuff. So... And you can believe me or not, it's up to you. But with that, I'll make my exit. Hope you all enjoy the rest of your day and your week. And if you need to talk to me about it, you know where I'm at. So, thank you.
That concludes public comments. At this time, is there anything that you'd like pulled from our consent agenda and moved to new business?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve consent agenda. Do I have a second? Motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Old business, none. New business, none. Managers' report? Is there anything you'd like to add to the managers' report?
Several things I'd like to highlight. I want to commend our code enforcement officer, Clara Hines, who spearheaded a very powerful initiative with our police department, specifically our Victims Advocate Department and the Police Department and the Hope Mills Police Foundation. It's called the Suffering in Silence, the 1079 Initiative. And so what it is, is that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and a lot of times the code 1079 is universally accepted by the police in terms of domestic violence issues. So what we're doing is we have boxes in front of the lobby of Town Hall, Parks and Rec Building, and the Public Safety Building, because we're collecting, trying to collect 79 cell phones. The 10 is the month of October, 79 of 79 cell phones. So what will happen is, when we're asking people and residents to donate or give us unused cell phones, they'll be wiped and provided to victims of domestic violence when they are encountering our Victims Advocate. And some of the statistics I think we'll read is 19,000 calls a day in America with domestic violence. It's every three seconds, there's a victim of domestic violence. So it's called Suffering in Silence, because a lot of people who are victims of domestic violence feel like they don't have a voice. And so we're doing whatever we can from the town to be able to at least be an advocate for that. And so this would not only go on through to end October, it'll be a permanent program, but I think it's something very powerful that we can do to support victims of domestic violence. Also wanted to highlight Trunk or Treats, again, October 27th, from 5:30 to 7:30 across the street at Camp Rock, at Rockfish Elementary. I wanted to thank our staff and elected and citizens who helped with the groundbreaking for Heritage Park that was held. That's phase one. Lamarcus Morrison will be going out to bid very soon, so we'll be starting construction. It's a huge milestone in the town. And finally, I'd like to clarify something with the Old Mill Days event. There's a lot of conversations out there, and I just wanted to point out to the citizens that there is the Old Mill Days Festival, and then you have the Old Mill Days Reunion Dinner. Those are two separate things. When we made the budget cuts this fiscal year, we, Parks and Rec, had to make the unfortunate decision to scale back on Trunk or Treat. They had to scale back on Christmas lights. And one of the things they had to do is to make the hard decision of eliminating what had been rebranded as Bytes, Booze, and Brews, which was the Old Mill Days Festival. That festival typically causing up was about $20,000. And so when the decision was made to cut that event, we did keep the Old Mill Days Reunion Dinner, which is typically done by the Hope Mills Preservation Committee. And so I think they decided to rebrand it to a Charter Day event in March. But there's this narrative out there that the board actually eliminated that event, and I just wanted to clarify that that actually didn't happen. A lot of people don't know that there are two separate events, and I wanted to put that into the record. But that concludes my manager's report, and I'd like to open up the floor any questions that you guys may have.
Chancellor, can you talk about... Because we had discussed about the overlays. Can you talk on that a little bit?
Yes. Commissioner Scrola and Commissioner Mitchell do routinely attend our plan review meetings on Thursdays, where we discuss a lot of the projects. And what we've seen is, if you recall, we did the overlay moratorium and the overlay district with regards to used car lots, gas station, and things of that nature. We put thresholds in place that you have to have at least an acre-sized lot to do a used car lot. And so what we're finding is there's a loophole where some of property owners are just combining lots to get an acre to still move forward with some of those uses. The way the overlay district works is not a map that prohibits those uses and a boundary. It actually lists the main arterial streets, like Legion Road, Hope Mills Road, Camden Road, things of that nature. And so with what appears to be loopholes, I do know that you guys authorized us to start moving forward with some amendments to the zoning code and the subdivision ordinance. I'm just letting you know, I'm probably gonna take a hard-line stance to eliminate those uses in those areas where the actual overlay district was established. And so that's what Commissioner Scorola is talking about. So you'll see that moving forward pretty soon, when we have our next set of work sessions to update the zoning ordinance.
And a matter of fact, Madam Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, you and I had some discussion too about, was it residential overlays as well, that the next one you're gonna look into doing?
Yes. So you'll see a full expansion. We're gonna update the subdivision ordinance to expand the landscaping requirements. We're gonna do a lot of creative things that I do think will help streamline a lot of the development here in town, to make sure that the quality of development is increased. But it does allow us to kind of tamp down and eliminate some of those undesirable uses that we're seeing as well.
Madam Mayor, for the public to let you know, no matter what kind of study that you do, it costs money. No matter what you do. You want to talk about the ducks, you gotta pay money. Want to talk about frogs, you gotta pay money. No matter what you do, there's gotta be some form of study done, and it costs money. This is one of the things you'll learn when you're up here. I, we used to sit out there and say, why we spend money on that study? But when you get up here, and you see the legal ramifications behind it all, you have to pay money to get it done right, to keep this town out of trouble, to make sure it's done correctly, and use the best business practices available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Any staff comments? All right, at this time, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go once a closed session pursuant to NCGS 14331811A3 to consult with the attorney on matters within attorney-client privilege, and pursuant to NCGS 14331811A6 to discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion, have a second? Have a motion, a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. At this time, we will retire to the front conference room. Bear with us, we'll try to be back as quickly as possible. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to settle the minutes of the closed session until such time as the release of the information will no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further no action was taken.
Have a motion, have a second? Motion, a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Do we have another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everyone's attendance this evening. And our next meeting is November the 6th.